Praise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Elkhorn Area School District Board Candidate Forum. I'm Ryan Holt, the president of the Elkhorn Rotary Club. It is my privilege to serve as your moderator this evening. We are here in the community room of the Matheson Memorial Library, and I'd like to extend a warm thank you for joining us, for the Rotary Club for planning this event in partnership with the library, and to the candidates for their participation. Our goal is to provide a platform to learn about the candidates, enable you, the voters, to make an informed decision in the upcoming election. Before we dive into the heart of the evening, I want to outline the format and the rules that will guide our proceedings. Opening Statements: Each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and share their vision for the Elkhorn Area School District. It's a chance to get to know who they are and what they stand for. Question and Answer: We have carefully selected five questions that each candidate will address. These questions, chosen by a panel prior to tonight, were designed to cover a broad range of issues affecting our school district. Candidates will have three minutes to answer each question, with the order of responses determined randomly to ensure fairness, with each candidate having the opportunity to answer a question first. Timekeeping: We will be very strict with our time limits tonight, both opening statements and for answers to questions. Candidates will be allowed to finish their sentence, but once their time is up, then we must move on. This ensures that everyone has equal time to share their perspective. You will see a 30-second, then 10-second, warning cards alerting you that the end of your time is approaching. Audience Participation: Out of respect for all candidates and attendees, we ask that you remain silent during the forum. Please hold any applause and comments until after the event. Please silence phones and watches, and hold all photography and phone video until after the event is over. This is to help maintain a focused and respectful environment for everyone involved, and it's going to be a challenge to hear everyone here tonight, so if we can stay quiet, that will assure that everyone hears the responses to the questions. If we cannot do these or follow these guidelines, you may be asked to leave. Interactions with Candidates: After the formal question and answer section, you'll have the opportunity to meet with candidates directly. This is your time to engage in personal conversation, ask additional questions, and get to know them better. For those unable to make it tonight or wanting to review the event, a recording of tonight's proceedings will be available tomorrow, and if you have trouble hearing a question or response, we ask that you see the video recording tomorrow. As we begin, I encourage you to listen carefully, consider the perspectives presented, and think about the future you envision for your schools and our children. Your participation tonight is a testament to the strength and dedication of our community. Without further ado, let's welcome our candidates and begin with opening statements. Thank you for being here and for your commitment to the future of the Elkhorn Area School District. Julia Ingersoll, welcome. Please take up to three minutes to tell us about yourself and your vision for the Elkhorn Area School District.
Good evening. My name is Julia Ingersoll, and I am a 28-year resident of Elkhorn, local business owner, wife of Greg Ingersoll, who is a lifelong resident and graduate of Elkhorn Area High School, mom to three young men who all graduated from Elkhorn Area High School, and I'm a two-term school board member, running for reelection for a third term. It has been my absolute pleasure to serve the Elkhorn Area School District as a member of its school board for the past six years. Honestly, it's hard to believe that that much time has passed since I was first elected in 2018. I didn't know what to expect that first year, but I can tell you that it was much like drinking from a fire hose, as I'm sure Debbie and Kathy can relate to. When I was first elected to the board, my youngest son was a junior in high school, so the vast majority of my time on the board has been after all of my kids graduated. For that reason, I'm often asked why I would dedicate so much time to serving on the school board. The simple answer is because I absolutely love the Elkhorn Area School District. My kids actually started out in a private Christian school, but my husband and I had purchased a home in Elkhorn specifically because we knew that providing them a Christian education through high school would probably not be financially feasible for us, and we knew that when the time came to pull them out of private school, we wanted our kids in Elkhorn. And we are so thankful that we made that conscious decision all those years ago, because the quality of education my kids received was top-notch, the experiences they were able to have through Elkhorn Area School District were invaluable, and the teachers they had were amazing. I am simply grateful to have had the opportunity to educate my children in such a wonderful district. So when an empty seat on the school board became available back in 2018, and I heard that no one was running, I knew it needed to be me. I wanted to give back to my community, and I wanted to help preserve an amazing school district and ensure that it remained amazing for future generations. Those same reasons are still my why today. I've learned so much during my time on the school board. Serving as treasurer for four years gave me an education in school finance, which I still can't say I completely understand, but it has helped me really appreciate what an amazing business manager we have in Elkhorn. Serving as vice president for a few short months and now as acting president have given me an opportunity to use my leadership skills, meeting a board that I believe works well together. We've had a lot of turnover on the board in the past year, and my hope is that we can minimize that turnover this spring and continue the great work that we've been doing. There is much to be said for consistency as well as longevity serving on a school board. My school board mentor and friend, the late Barb Fisher, taught me that. Our school is facing and will continue to face challenging times, but it is my absolute belief that the current makeup of our school board is up for the challenge. Thank you for being here tonight.
Bridgette Leahy Vaughn, welcome, and please take up to three minutes to tell us about yourself and your vision for the Elkhorn School District.
Hello, I am Bridgette Leahy Vaughn. I'm a little nervous, I'm really out of my comfort zone, so bear with me. I'm a lifelong resident of Elkhorn and also an alumni of this district. My husband and I have been married for 25 years, well, let me correct that, next month it'll be 25 years in his life, and we'll celebrate 25 years together. We picked this great community to raise our three beautiful girls, two who have graduated from high school, and one is, our youngest is in elementary school. I think that we can all agree that the heart of the community is a great public school. I am very proud of our district and the excellent foundation it provides for all of our children. My goal is to bring back the common sense, student-focused approach that many of our previous board members displayed.
Kyle Gordon, welcome. Please take up to three minutes to tell us about yourself and your vision for the Elkhorn Area School District.
Since I was told that there's only a microphone on the camera and I'm the furthest away, I'll be using my teacher voice, but I don't want you to think I'm angry. First of all, I'd like to thank the Elkhorn Rotary for sponsoring this forum. I was encouraged by friends and concerned parents to run for school board. Their concerns and my concern are how outside influences are trying to affect the education in Elkhorn. I'm a longtime resident of Elkhorn, 36 years, and have been deeply involved in the Elkhorn educational system as a high school teacher for 39 years. To many of you, I was your senior class advisor who helped you, helped your children, and yes, even helped your grandchildren go through graduation, along with the other senior events. Our son spent his entire school years in this district, graduating in 2003, something that my wife and I are very proud of the education that he got here. Though I never thought that I would ever run for Elkhorn School Board, I know I would be a very good one. It's my skill set. That last statement would make my mother very mad because she taught me always to be humble and never brag. For that reason, I did not use grade school board membership. I'm a strong supporter for the right of parents to choose the best education for their own children without interference and restriction from outsiders. I'm a strong supporter of our schools and their employees. I believe in hiring qualified people and standing back and letting them do their jobs. I'm not a micromanager. I believe that all students and school employees should be safe on school property at all times. I believe education should be individualized for the needs of every student. You will not see me use this position to pad my political resume to run for another office. I am not a politician, I have no political agenda. I feel Elkhorn students shouldn't be used as political pawns. Politics has no place in public schools. I believe the cornerstone of any great community is a solid school system. Thank you.
Devin Gattin, welcome. Please take up to three minutes to tell us about yourself and your vision for the Elkhorn Area School District.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks for the Rotary Club for having us. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight to hear all the candidates speak and where they stand on as many issues as possible. My name is Devin Gattin, I'm running for reelection for the Elkhorn Area School Board. I moved to Elkhorn in 2019 after finding the perfect home for my family. I'm a Wisconsin resident who joined the Marine Corps directly out of high school and got out in 2011. After leaving the military, my wife and I moved back to Wisconsin to live closer to our two oldest sons. In 2016, I completed my college degree, earning my bachelor's degree with a triple major in history, political science, and religious studies. After the 2016 election, I was offered and accepted a position working in the Department of Veterans Affairs, and began doing some of the most rewarding work a human could do, helping disabled veterans. After six years of working as an accounting legal instrument examiner, I felt that my time working at the VA was ending. I had 14 years working in government accounting, and I wanted to look for a new challenge. In 2022, I started my new position as a program manager managing a homeless veteran shelter, which is where I still work today. In 2023, I was appointed to the school board, which I have served on the financial ad hoc committee, the personnel committee, and the district recognition ad hoc committee. Additionally, I have 11 children that I am helping to raise, four biological, two adopted, and five foster children. It's because of these experiences with raising not only my own children, but some of the most difficult cases in the county for foster care, that I care so much about our school district, and I want to continue to see it successfully into the future. I know and understand that I'm not going to be everybody's choice. I'm blunt, outspoken, and a stalwart defender in my positions. However, when you do vote for me, you can absolutely be assured that there will never be any surprise votes, and that what I say, or whenever I say something, I am not hiding my true opinions. When you vote for me, you'll be voting to keep your taxes low, focus on core academics, and you know I'll be fighting for parental rights every time it comes up. And no matter what, I will be making the hard choices to make our schools better. Thank you, and I look forward to earning your vote.
Kathy Kostak, welcome. Please take up to three minutes to tell us about yourself and your vision for the Elkhorn Area School District.
As with the other candidates, thank you. Thank you to Rotary, and thank you all for being here this evening. I'm also a longtime resident of Elkhorn, primarily the town of Sugar Creek, so I am an earshot of Tippett's Elementary, and it's great to hear the kids laughing and the bells ringing. My own kids were in attendance there. I'm a proud parent of two Elkhorn Area graduates. I'm currently a board member, having been appointed this past fall, and it feels a little bit like the interview process I had with them, except very many more people. One of the questions that I was asked during that interview process is why? I am a former educator. I can see things from the teacher's side of the desk, and I have appreciation for the work that they do and the commitment that they have to their students. I'm a parent, and I understand the commitment and partnership that's needed to achieve the academic goals. I'm also a homeowner, a resident like you, and I have skin in the game. There's this little item on our tax bill that makes me a stakeholder, makes you a stakeholder, and I hope to carry your voice forward. Another question I was asked during the interview process would be, what would your friends or coworkers say about you? And so I asked, and some of those responses were that I'm open-minded and level-headed and a self-starter, I'm compassionate, dedicated, I work well with others, and I'm decisive. I'm here to make good choices for our kids, good choices for our community, and sometimes that means making hard choices, saying no or not now. And just like any of us who have dealt with a home budget, we work hard to figure out ways to make things work. My vision is simply a portion of our mission statement, and that is to have respectful, responsible, and productive members of our society come from the schools, excuse me, the school students. The kids attending our schools today are the nannies and the law enforcement officers of tomorrow, my own children. They are the farmers and medical technicians, the artists and tradesmen, they are the parents and the entrepreneurs that live in this Elkhorn district. I look forward to being selected as your Elkhorn Area School Board member and continuing to work to achieve that mission. Thank you.
Bridgette, what do you believe are the top two educational priorities for our school district, and how would you plan to address them with your peers among the school board and community?
I think the focus needs to be on each child and their individual needs. I think it's important that we support our educators, to provide them with the guidance and support, both physically and mentally. I think that we support them no matter what they want to do in life, if they want to grill our food, if they want to fix our cars, or if they want to take the next appendix out. It's important that we support them in their dreams so that they are successful and productive members of society.
Kyle, what do you believe are the top two educational priorities for our school district, and how would you plan to address them with your peers among the school board and the community?
When I agreed to run for this office, I purposely went to each of the buildings in our district. I have a high school background, I do know middle school, and I didn't know much about our elementary schools or our options program or our college and career academy. So I purposely went to talk to each of the principals, and I am simply amazed by what this school district does. So my first priority is to maintain what we are doing right now. We are in such a great position that we have more open-enrolled students from other places coming to our school because of the opportunities that we give our students, and that also brings us some money, too. So that's my first priority. My first priority is to make sure that we maintain what we have now. My second priority would be to make sure that every student's educational needs are addressed, and I think we do that very well in this district. Thank you.
Devin, what do you believe are the top two educational priorities for our school district, and how would you plan to address them with your peers among the school board and community?
So the first issue that I think is number one and priority is our STEM program. We've been working really well on the board, trying to make sure that Project Lead the Way continues and is doing a great job for our kids, as young all the way down to elementary school, the elementary level all the way up. STEM is the future. For those of you who don't know, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It's that core base of future technology, future education that the entire country is truly going towards or should go towards. The second educational issue that I think that we should probably focus on is flexibility for our students. Making sure that just because one student learns a specific way doesn't mean another student's going to learn a better way. Options is a perfect example for this. One of the reasons why we have such an influx of students coming into the district is because of our options program. It's a virtual charter school that allows for us to be able to educate our students in a non-traditional classroom setting. It gives the opportunity for us to be able to take students that do not live in the district and bring them inside our district and give them the same type of education that our students would be given here. Thank you.
Kathy, what do you believe are the top two educational priorities for our school district, and how would you plan to address them with your peers among the school board and community?
As other candidates have indicated, we have such a wide array of educational opportunities here from our elementary schools, our traditional elementary, middle school, and high school, along with our CAC and options programs. I was unaware of many of those things, having students long since graduated from the district, and I think it is absolutely critical that we also maintain those opportunities. Open enrollment, as Kyle mentioned, does bring in funds to our district, and that's a helpful thing. We are facing challenges in those areas. Another area of concern is meeting students where they are, meeting their educational needs where they're at, providing for them the best opportunities and the best environments for them. Thank you.
Julia, what do you believe are the top two educational priorities for the school district, and how do you plan to address them with your peers on the school board and the community?
As many other people have already mentioned, our options program and career and college academy programs are, in my mind, some of the most innovative things that we've done. We're starting to see other school districts copy us because we have led the way in those areas. So one of my priorities would be to expand both of those schools, you know, try and get additional students from statewide to participate in our options program. That is only going to help us in a fiscal manner to be able to combat the budget issues that we're facing. And as for the career and college academy, I only wish that that had been around when my kids were in school, because my husband and I work with the sixth graders right now in the middle school to bring awareness of the building trades to those kids. And what we have seen, we've seen kids who we worked with in the sixth grade now at the CNCA, and they are now choosing careers in the trades. And honestly, that is the direction that our world is going right now, is the world of trades. We are sadly lacking students entering the trades, and so I am thrilled that we have this opportunity for our kids and for other kids who want to come to our school district. So I would like to see an expansion of both of those areas, because I believe that that is quite honestly the future of our education. And then, I don't know if this is necessarily an educational priority, but it affects the education of our children, is we've got to have, continue to have, a fiscally responsible budget. As we all know, the school district is facing some, you know, some things that we have to, we're going to have to cut, we're going to have to make some cuts, but we're also, we also have to maintain the level of education that we currently have, that is priority number one for me, is maintaining and continuing to be able to hire the best person for the
Kyle, with the increased reliance on technology in education, how do you plan to ensure that the school district stays at the forefront of technological advancement to provide students with the skills needed to be career and/or college-ready?
That's a good question. I'm not sure how to start, but I think the school is already using technology in so many different ways that, again, I would say we need to maintain that. A concern on my part, and it was when I was a teacher, is sometimes technology is a distraction from learning, and during the class time, that students get distracted and it affects their learning. So that would be one of my concerns, is that we monitor our technology and the use of it so that it enhances their learning and doesn't distract from it.
Devin, with the increased reliance on technology in education, how do you plan to ensure that the school district stays at the forefront of technological advancement to provide students with the skills needed to be career and/or college-ready?
So our school district has a lot of unique aspects to it. As we talked about multiple times already, Project Lead the Way is major in our district. It's something that the superintendent brought into the district, and it's been really truly advantageous for the entire school district. However, specifically, our trade department over at the high school is just amazing. You walk inside there, and there are machines in there that I couldn't even name if I wanted to. But as long as we're going through, making sure that we're keeping up with our trade technology, making sure that we're focusing in on that, and the rest, getting them in a CCA, working with Project Lead the Way, it will eventually make sure that we are still at the forefront of the technological boom that is going on.
Kathy, with the increased reliance on technology in education, how do you plan to ensure that the school district stays at the forefront of technological advancement to provide students with the skills needed to be career and/or college-ready?
I had the opportunity to tour our high school just last week, the library and media center, the, as Devin was saying, the tech department. Blown away, we had a couple of kids and our auto tech coursework that, we were at a competition earlier this week, and walked away with thousands of dollars in scholarship tools and equipment. It's because of those opportunities we are building our future and our community. So it is imperative that we continue to offer these programs and offer and have technology available so that our students can be the leaders in our community. We need to work together to make sure that we're making good budget decisions and keeping those programs and advances available.
Julia, with the increased reliance on technology in education, how do you plan to ensure that the school district stays at the forefront of technological advancement to provide students with the skills needed to be career and/or college-ready?
Well, one thing that I love about our school district is that we've always been at the forefront of technology. I can't, I can't think of another school district in the area that is better equipped than we are with the current technology that is available to our students right now. So, yes, there is an increased reliance on technology, and as Mr. Gordon mentioned, technology can sometimes be a distraction. And personally, I would advocate for no cell phones in the, you know, in the classroom, period, because I think it is a major distraction, and it's been done in other school districts quite successfully. It's also been proven to decrease bullying in the school. It's, that would be, so that, in my mind, there are some times, like Mr. Gordon mentioned, technology can be a distraction. But as far as what we're doing now, the whole reason we have an option school is because we are at the forefront of technology. We have the ability to educate any child in this entire state, and I think that's tremendous. We have been at the forefront of all the STEM learning with Project Lead the Way. We are one of the few districts in the area that offers Project Lead the Way, and that is our science course. It's our, it's our education from kindergarten through 12th grade, and I have personally been to a Project Lead the Way conference and a national conference and done a presentation there. It's fantastic. We need to continue moving in that direction with our learning with Project Lead the Way. So I don't, right now, I don't see any hindrances in our school district for kids on the So I don't, right now, I don't see any hindrances in our school district for kids on the technology front. Let's just keep doing what we're doing and being at the forefront on that.
Bridgette, with the increased reliance on technology in education, how do you plan to ensure that the Elkhorn Area School District stays at the forefront of technological advancement to provide students with the skills necessary to be career and/or college ready?
As a senior, I was in Mr. Fieldkey's AV course, and I can assure you it has improved tremendously. I think that our school district is really tech savvy, and I think that they offer a lot of different opportunities for our kids right now. Obviously, with the increased want of technology, there comes the budget. And I think that there's so many different ways that we can help our district and our kids, and in turn, partner with neighboring communities that potentially we could team up with them and have a CNC location, have an auto mech location. I think partnering with our community and our surrounding communities would be essential for us.
Devon, how do you envision the Elkhorn Area School District utilizing the Matheson Memorial Library's professional resources to address book challenges in the future?
Realistically, relying on our librarians, whether it be through Matheson or through our school district, is the route that we have to go. We have to trust our librarians to be able to make those decisions on the spot of whether or not a book is appropriate or not. That being said, when going through a book challenge, it's important for everybody to remain calm, stay on message, make sure that we're understanding all of the facts of what is going on and what is happening. Just this past year, we had a book challenge here at Elkhorn. Tempers got flared, misinformation was flying around rampantly, and it eventually got to the point where individuals that were involved in the book challenge started to get threats from their own. It's unacceptable. And our community has to take responsibility for that, for those people that did those things. That being said, I don't believe any book should ever be banned, ever. There are, what happened with our, what happened with our review was, is we went through the process that was already put into place. We had our principals eventually remove the books from the areas they did not belong. For example, we had about two dozen books from the middle school that got pushed up to the high school. And then, some of the books from the high school were put into a restricted section, which needed to be checked out properly. That being said, as we're going along into the future, I hope that we don't have to come along another 400 book review. It took a lot of time and a lot of resources. And I just want to end on saying that I appreciate the work that all of the staff did, putting in the effort and the time, the hours, the countless hours that it took to be able to get through that book review.
Kathy, how do you envision the Elkhorn Area School District utilizing the Matheson Memorial Library's professional resources to address the challenges of book challenges in the future?
Thank you. I agree, it was a challenging time to go through the book review that we did, but we had a policy in place and followed it. We have since reviewed that policy and are making steps to make it better, make the process better. I agree that we need to entrust our professionals, our libraries, workers at our schools, at our different buildings, along with and partnering with perhaps Matheson professionals. They're in the thick of it. They're working with these children at their age levels and can help make decisions, help children make decisions, help parents make decisions about what is appropriate reading material. So I think partnering together between the library staff here and the library staff at our different school locations is a great practice. We do have it available that our schoolchildren can check out a book from the library here. It's part of our regular routine. So it's great that we already have that partnership starting in place. Utilize the resources that we have.
Julia, how do you envision the Elkhorn Area School District utilizing the Matheson Memorial Library's professional resources to address book challenges in the future?
Well, I think that having gone through a recent book challenge, seeing where our policy was weak and where it needed to have some changes made to it has been a good thing. While the process of the book challenge that we went through might not have been something we had desired or even had foresight that would happen, you know, hindsight is 20/20, and it's now given us an ability to go back and figure out what is, what is a good policy. And so we're working at that. It's still in progress. We continue to work on that. The library, as Mrs. Kostog mentioned, is already being utilized by our school district for students to get the materials that they want to, you know, that they want to read that aren't in our library currently. So I'm not completely understanding the question because that policy, that already exists, and we're already doing that. But I think in the future, that may end up being utilized more in the future. I think we're working very hard to make the current policy better so that it doesn't affect our administration at such a deep level. But I also have to say that now that, now that all of the books that were maybe considered controversial have been reviewed and books have been moved, no book was banned, which I am, I was 100% in favor of. Books have been moved to where they needed to be. There have been books put on restriction, and parents can, can give permission for their kids to, you know, to have access to those books. The parents are in complete control, in my opinion. Parents have complete control over what their children are reading in our library. And I'm in 100% favor of that.
Bridgette, how do you envision the Elkhorn Area School District utilizing the Matheson Memorial Library's professional resources to address book challenges in the future?
So I think that a great, great thing that already has happened and continues to happen is bringing our elementary kids into the, into the library. I'd like to see more of maybe the library coming to the schools. I think it's important that our kids are able to approach any librarian and ask for assistance, maybe some guidance when the parent isn't there. Obviously, we all know that it should be the parent's choice to choose whether their children can read books or not. But with the assistance of the librarians and the educators or teachers, I think together, they'll continue to do what they're already doing.
Kyle, how do you envision the Elkhorn Area School District utilizing the Matheson Memorial Library's professional resources to address book challenges in the future?
Your term "challenges," I think is throwing the deus up here a little bit on what you meant by that. And I'll first of all state that I completely support how the school is handling book challenges and what it does, so I won't address that anymore. As for the challenges with working with the library, I'm all for it. At the high school level, the library no longer looks like the library I saw in 81. Now they're reading books on their Chromebooks, and I understand that. And it's probably cost effective to do that. I'm old school. I want to, I want something in my hand. I want to be able to refer back to a chapter without having to scroll. So I'm all for, for students using this library. Being retired, I get to use the library during the day, and it's just amazing how busy it is with parents and children here. I strongly encourage that.
Devon, as a school board member, how would you prioritize budgeting and resource allocation to meet the needs of students, teachers, and administrators while maintaining fiscal responsibility and transparency within the community?
Thank you. Sorry, I needed a moment to jot that all down. Budget is a hot topic. There's no, no way around it. And we do need to make some hard choices, what I said in my introduction. I would hope, most of us are familiar with the budget at our own family level. And sometimes you need to say no, or not now, or how can we plan for that in the future? And we need to make those same considerations, obviously, on a much larger scale with consideration to our community, our taxpayers, and our students. We want to provide the best possible things for our kids. I think we are all in agreement about that without question. How we go about doing that is going to be the hard part. And so making sure that we're looking at the budget. We need to tear it apart line by line to find out where the nooks and crannies are of things that can be cut, I hate to use that word, reduced, eliminated, changed, evaluated. We're going to need time to do that, and we need to make sure that we are allocating, as you said, allocating our resources the best way possible in order to make the best choices for our kids. It's something that I stand firm on from the very beginning. We want to make good choices for our kids, make good choices for our community. And bringing that to you, bringing that out, I think perhaps maybe when it comes time to talk about budget, that's maybe coming back to the community and saying, hey, this is what's going on. This is where we're falling short. This is where we have some, some overhead. How should we best address this? These are questions that we need to work together on. I know that the school board that is currently in place is already making those considerations. The ADHOC committee that met tirelessly and went through that review of the budget that was presented to us at a recent school board meeting. It's going to be some hard work ahead, and we need to work together to do it.
Julia, as a school board member, how would you prioritize budgeting and resource allocation to meet the needs of students, teachers, and administrators while maintaining fiscal responsibility and transparency with the community?
It's a loaded question. And there's no easy answer, as Kathy mentioned. Unfortunately, the way our schools are funded is not an easy thing to understand. I served as treasurer for four years, and I'm not sure I completely understand it still. I have a much greater understanding, but it's, there is definitely a problem at the state level with how our schools are funded. I don't want to just blame them, but there is a problem at the state level with how our schools are funded. And the formula that they use to get everybody to, you know, to get funded. Every, you understand, and I say this now because there are a lot of people who do not understand this. We do not get the exact same amount per student in every school. It is a formula that the state comes up with to get to that funding. And that formula is, you know, there's a school district right down the road from us that gets $3,500 more per student than we do. And so we are one of the least spending schools in the entire state. We're in the bottom 10% of spending per pupil. And yet, we are faced with some, some budget challenges. So it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot of understanding that when inflation is, you know, year over year over the last four years is up at 17%, and we gave our teachers one and a half percent raise last year when every other school district gave a minimum of 4% raise, up to 8% raise, and our teachers are sitting here saying, what about us? And yet, the community is communicating to us that we don't want a referendum. We do not want to pay any more money, and the state is telling us, we are not giving you any more money. So we're in between a rock and a hard place. Somewhere, something's got to give. So I don't know the easy, there is no easy answer, and I don't have that answer. But as a board, we are working toward that. We are looking wherever we can make cuts. But it's going to have to be a shared process with the community. That's all I have to say.
Bridgette, as a school board member, how would you prioritize budgeting and resource allocation to meet the needs of students, teachers, and administrators while maintaining fiscal responsibility and transparency with the community?
Well, my education on our budget was the results of the ADHOC committee meeting that I attended. And I would just like to say that I think we're pretty blessed as a district to have who's in charge running things right now, because I think they are being very fiscally responsible. As Julia said, we are the lowest per pupil spending district in our area. And I think that, with that being said though, we can't pull back a lot of our programs and just cut, cut, cut. I think we have to be creative, and we have to have productive conversations, respectful conversations, and explore all the avenues to give all of our kids the same results, which is actually what all of us parents want. I think it's also an opportunity, if I were to be, you know, elected on the board, that I could get out in the community more, try to bridge that gap and share what I'm, I'm learning within the budget, talkings, because I haven't had that privilege. But try to bridge that gap between the community and explain if it needs to be explained. But I think just trying to build us back as a community and not be so divided. Our kids are worth it, I think, and I don't think there's anybody that doesn't, you know, doesn't dispute that.
Kyle, as a school board member, how would you prioritize budgeting and resource allocation to meet the needs of students, teachers, and administrators while maintaining fiscal responsibility and transparency with the community?
I think that's our number one priority. Bridgette and I met with Eric Jones, the head of the, or that chaired the ADHOC committee, and he really simplified things for us so we understood the problem. And if I get it wrong, Eric, you'll let me know. For a long time, the state has capped how much money the district can ask for from the taxpayers. If a district needs more money to run the operations of the district, the state expects the district to go to the taxpayers and ask for the funding. The district does not receive much, if any, funding from the state in the past two years. The district received COVID funding. That funding is now over, leaving the district with a $2.5 million shortfall. Now, we are dependent upon state funding again. If the state would have kept up with the cost of living and inflation rate during the COVID years, we wouldn't be having this discussion because we would be fined financially. But that did not happen. The district needs more money, not to expand, the district needs more money to maintain what it has now. There is no fluff. If you know Belle Truand, you have no fluff in our, in our budget. And it's not, and if we're going to cut $2.5 million from our budget, that means we have to eliminate teachers. to eliminate teachers, we have to eliminate support staff, and we have to eliminate programs, which is encouraging people and students from outside our school district to open enrollment in our school district. So it's a domino effect. Last summer, at the beginning of the state budget year, the state had a $7.1 billion surplus. And I'll say that again because it needs to resonate. $7.1 billion surplus. At the end of the current state budget, as predicted, the state will still have $4 billion surplus. With that said, it's time for the state to step up. I recommend all of us to contact our state legislators, contact the governor. With over 90 referendums on the ballot this spring, this is statewide problem. This is not a Elkhorn problem. The state needs to start adequately funding education because we know they're not going to give us a taxpayer.
Devin. As a school board member, how would you prioritize budgeting and resource allocation to meet the needs of students, teachers, and administrators while maintaining fiscal responsibility and transparency within the community?
First of all, I know I saw Bill in here. Thank you for all that you have taught me, because it's been a lot over the last year. So we have a number of different areas that we can look at. Yes, we don't have fluff in our budget, but we do have areas that we can cut. We do have places that we could look at to be able to find some of those funds. We've been doing it for years. The last 10 years, we have reduced our budget by millions of dollars by cutting out some of those redundancies, some of those things that can be cut out. It can be done. Fund 80 is something that I'd like to be able to look at. Over the last seven years, eight years, it has increased five-fold from what it was originally, where it was originally. That can be looked at. We can look at other different ways to manage those funds and put those funds in a different place. For those who don't know, Fund 80 is a community fund. It's not the general fund for the district. It's just a community fund. Next thing that I would love to be able to look at, right now we have a 14.121 student-to-teacher ratio in the district. That can raise. That can be looked at. It doesn't mean we have to fire anybody. It doesn't mean we have to let anybody go, but it does mean that we can look at positions strategically, figure out what areas that we have too many teachers or, you know, not enough teachers, and make sure that we're, as people are leaving the district, that we don't replace those people. It's just that simple. Those individuals that tend to be leaving are individuals that are retiring. Our school district currently has the highest-paid teachers in the region at $65,000 per year. That plus benefits is approximately $100,000 per year. We do not replace 10 teachers. That is $1 million per year that we are looking at, that we are suddenly putting in the budget. Next thing, open enrollment. Our open enrollment numbers are astronomical because students want to come here. Parents want to send their kids here. The reason why they want to send their kids here is because of our programs and our ability to be able to have a virtual charter school within our school district that is monitored by a school district. It is the largest virtual charter school that is monitored by a school district in the entire state. I want to continue to see that rise. I want to continue to see that get bigger. Right now, we have approximately 200 students over at Options. I want to see that number reach to about 500. We can do that, and it increases the revenue coming into the district eventually. Next thing, is the difference, there's a difference between being projected and actual budgets. Our projected budget is we have a shortfall. We had a projected shortfall last year for our budget as well. We had a 1.5 negative balance. However, when it actually came in, we were in the black by about $1 million. We can make those choices and keep us in the black at the same time.
Julia. As a school board member, what skill sets will you bring to the school board, and how do you plan on immersing yourself within the role if elected?
Well, I have served for six years already on the school board. I feel that I have tremendous leadership capabilities. One thing that, when I started on the school board back in 2018, one thing that was communicated to me, and I've communicated, I continue to communicate to other board members that have come on, is, you know, you can disagree on things, but you can't be disagreeable. And I am proud to say that in the entire six years that I have served on the board, you have never seen a school board yell at each other, or members of the school board yell at each other. We get along. We work together, and we are from a very diverse background and always have been. When I came on the board six years ago, it was a very diverse board, and yet we always seemed to be able to work things out, and very rarely was there ever a vote, or has there ever been a vote while I've been on the board that has just been split down the middle. You know, we're nearly almost always either, you know, 6-1 or 7-0. So I love that about our board, that we come from diverse backgrounds, and yet we can work together to achieve a goal of providing the best education for our kids. So that's one thing that I feel that I do well, is I listen. I listen to both, you know, arguments from both sides, and we work really well together to achieve the purpose of providing the best education as we can for our kids.
Bridgette. As a school board member, what skill sets will you bring to the school board, and how do you plan on immersing yourself in the role if elected?
Well, first off, I think my children are my biggest resource, so I would probably tend to lean to them and use my own experiences to help navigate myself through the decisions that the board has to make. If you were to ask my husband, my biggest skill set is I'm a good leader. I want to make sure that everybody's taken care of. I think my want for all kids to have the same experience, not the same experience, but the same opportunities that across the board, I think that's huge. I'm an advocate for that. I believe in the kids. I believe in our teachers. I trust our teachers. There's been multiple times that a teacher's had to come to me and say, "I don't think your child should read that," or "I think they're falling behind." We have to partner, and I think that's part of what the board has to do. The vote doesn't always have to be 7-0 or 6-0. It's good to have different views and different takes on life. We have to bridge this community and this school district together. I do think that that is the most important thing, is that we come together as an entire district and community.
Kyle. As a school board member, what skill sets will you bring to the school board, and how do you plan on immersing yourself within the role if elected?
Oh, first of all, for 40-plus years, education's been my line, and I bring that skill set when it comes to curriculum. Sadly, I have to say, I've done curriculum six, seven times, and I'm happy not to be doing that anymore. Not that it's not important, it's just that it's a lot of work, and every time we do curriculum, we have to, we have something new. We have to, there's always been learning objectives, but now the state standards and things like that have to be done. So that I have, I know that. As for leadership, I was president for six years of the Wisconsin Association for Language Teachers, and I was finance committee chair for the same organization for 14 years. I know how to do budgets. Our budget was only $200,000, but we knew where to cut, what to leave alone, because we were under a limited budget also. You're not going to find a more conscientious person when it comes to preparing for the board. I'm retired. I can do that. And when it comes to making a board presence, I'm retired. I can be there, and I encourage you to let me know, and I will be there. Thank you.
Devin. As a school board member, what skill sets will you bring to the school board, and how do you plan on immersing yourself within the role if elected?
I just want to, first of all, Julia, you are absolutely right. Like you have, since I've been on the board in the last year, you've done such a fantastic job of keeping, you know, everything agreeable, making sure that even when we disagree, that it is still us working together to try to do what's best for the community and the school district, not just what we personally believe in. You've done a fantastic job of that. I just wanted to say thank you for that. So my areas that are going to be best for me to be able to bring to the school district, first of all, my foster care background. As I said earlier, I deal with some of the most difficult kids in the district. Some of them have mental health disorders. Some of them have physical health disorders. Some of them just have bad home lives. We bring them into our home. We make sure that they're getting taken care of, and we get them the education that they need wherever they may need it, which brings me to my next point, which is I have children in every single school in the district, from SOFOs to CCA to Options to the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. I make sure that all of my children are getting the education that they need within the school district, and well-versed within the different schools, what goes on, what they are doing, what the need is for those different schools. Next thing is, I have 14 years of government accounting experience. I spent eight years in the Marine Corps doing government accounting. I did another six years working at the VA, working with government accounting. We're talking millions, tens of millions, even more of dollars every single year I was dealing with. I have no problems going through and finding those little things that people think that aren't in that budget, that can be cut, that need to be cut. Final thing is, I spent a lot, part of the time when I was in the Marine Corps was just kind of learning who I am, and I've been able to make connections with children that are difficult to be able to work with. That's something that I've been doing with the school district, is going through those kids that are borderline unable to go to school because of whatever's going on. I make sure that I am there for them, make sure that I'm there, connecting with them, trying to get them the help that they need so that they are able to successfully complete school, whatever that looks like for them.
Kathy. As a school board member, what skill sets will you bring to the school board, and how do you plan on immersing yourself in the role if elected?
I have to go back to what I said at the beginning, the comments that my friends, coworkers, former coworkers, bosses had said about me. I'm open-minded. I'm level-headed. I'm a self-starter. I'm compassionate. I'm dedicated. I cooperate, collaborate with others, and I'm decisive. I think that's me in a nutshell, and that skill set is so unique, the fact that I come with that education background. I have not taught nearly as long as Kyle, and my hat's off to you, but I worked with challenging students. I worked with those students that Devin described. I'm a parent. I watch the challenges that my own kids went through. I get it. I've been on that side of the table as the homeowner, as the resident, going, "Wait a minute. They want my money to do what?" So I'm there. I can see myself continuing on with our curriculum and budget committees. Kids are first. Our community needs to be involved in that as well, in making good decisions, making hard decisions, but making them together. Thank you.
That concludes our question-and-answer segment. I just want to put forth my utmost appreciation to the audience and the crowd. You were very respectful. It was wonderful to have you here. My thanks to the candidates, as well as participating. This is the first time the Rotary has done this, and we hope to do more of these in the future. So at this time, the candidates are going to stand and be amongst the room, if you can stay, and you're free to stand and have questions. So thank you all for being here.